Well, hey my friends, what is going on? Welcome once again to the Everyday Missionary Podcast, a podcast that is dedicated to seemingly only coming out now like once a month. So, man, I took a hiatus, not a planned hiatus, there was a number of things involved in that, but we have not been together now for, I think, three, almost four weeks. Like, I think the last podcast I did was like the third week of July, and now we're into almost, pretty much, the third week of August. That's a big gap in there, and again, there was different reasons for that. I think part of it, just to be really honest, is I was kinda tired, you know what I mean? It's like, you know, I was working on an article that was taking a lot of emotional energy, and then still doing church stuff, and just life stuff or whatever else. And so sometimes, you know, when you're trying to churn out content every week, you just go like, "Man, I just need a break from some of the content for a little bit. I'll collect my own thoughts," that kind of thing, and so took some time off. But now we're back, and today is episode 278, and I think I'm gonna loosely title this, "City Councils, Pride Flags, Christian Nationalism, and the Way of Jesus." So it's like, yeah, we're gonna see where that goes, man. Now, before I do that, though, I want to do a little bit of housekeeping here. A couple of things that are just kinda fun, interesting, or things I want you to know about, that kind of deal. First of all, is I received an email just this morning, forwarded onto me from my executive pastor, Scott Thompson, that apparently the Everyday Missionary Podcast is now in the top thirty of, I guess, missionary podcasts on some kind of web resource somewhere. It's called Feedspot, and it's the best missionary podcast from thousands of podcasts on the web, ranked by traffic, social media followers, and freshness. And so apparently somehow, this podcast is being ranked based on traffic, social media followers, and freshness. It's not fresh if it comes out every four weeks, alright? So that's kind of the first thing. But hey, that's kinda cool, it's kinda neat to know that, hey, out there in the netherworld, that at least a handful of people are listening to this podcast, and now it's gotten ranked in someplace, which then also would maybe I would encourage, I never do this, but I would encourage you, if you listen to this on iTunes, or wherever you may listen, to just rate it, you know, to maybe leave a comment, that kinda helps kinda get some of the traffic volume up, and gives an opportunity for more people to maybe kinda listen. And so, I just wanna encourage that. I also encourage that because I've actually recently done something with both the Everyday Missionary, my blog, and kinda the podcast, which is, I'm now personally paying out of pocket for it. So, for the last 277 episodes, it has been sponsored by Redemption Church, and now that we're going into this building phase, and you know, I know that finances are gonna be tight as you go into a building phase, I'm like, I'm just gonna shoulder those financial responsibilities, just personally, kinda going forward, when it comes to the podcast and the blog and that kinda thing. And so, with that, just trying to get a little bit more like listenership on some of that, and I might even, and I know I said I would never do this, but I'm kinda considering like, "Hey, do I start a Patreon for the podcast, just kinda to, you know, kind of increase its reach, and to subsidize kinda the cost of running the podcast and doing the blog and everything else?" I'm thinking about that, I'm not sure I'm there yet, but just kinda something I'm kicking around there a little bit. So, anyway, if you hear about that in the coming weeks, great. In the meantime, though, I'm just like, "Hey, leave a comment, rate it. If you wanna give it five stars, awesome. If you wanna give it one star, be generous and give it two." That would be it. So, that's the first thing. Second thing is, I did recently write an article, which is gonna have then some relationship to the topic today, but I wrote an article on looking at the pride flag from a different point of view. And if you wanna read that, it is at the actual blog location, which is everyday-missionary.com, everyday-missionary.com, all one kinda thing. But it's pretty lengthy, so I warn you in advance, it's not gonna take you five minutes to read, it's gonna take you like fifteen, twenty minutes to read, depending on your reading speed. It's very personal, lots of tears were shed in the writing of it, and I'm just trying to, in that telling kind of my story and relationship to my son, maybe if you're listening and you don't know, I have a gay son, twenty-three years old. We knew about the time he was twelve, that he was gay, and then kind of our journey, and a lot of the failures that I made in the process, and a lot of the lessons I've learned kinda going forward. And so, wrote that, so far, it's, I think it's been read well over a thousand times, which is, again, really great, I'm very appreciative. I thought, "Man, if twenty people read this, it'll be amazing." And so the fact that it's now over a thousand people, and I think I published it, I don't know, maybe two weeks ago, something like that, and so, you know, if interested, not that everybody's gonna agree with it, like, that's, you know, the weirdest thing about me is I really do choose to be super, super transparent, and there's always a risk in that, for sure, but I'm kinda like, I honestly think that, that more people appreciate that than don't, and I, I've been in life and pastoral ministries for so long, I've seen so much of kind of the veneer, and keeping up appearances stuff, and, you know, like, I know people's real stories at times, but then I see the public persona that they cast, and I'm like, "Can we all just be open with our messiness? Can we be open with our failures and mistakes? And can we be supportive of each other in the midst of that, right?" So I tend to kinda go on the transparent side, and in that article, you know, I'm very, just very open about a lot of stuff, and then I kinda concluded of what I'm asking Christians to do in light of all of this stuff that I've just written. And part of the reason for that is because I do know that when we're in our own ecosystems, so for us as evangelicals, we kinda live in this ecosystem space, we, we kind of absorb our news from certain resources, we absorb our Christian teaching from certain resources, and that kinda thing, and for anybody in any space where you kinda have your tribe, is, it's pretty easy to be tone deaf in the midst of that. And so, that's kinda why I was even wanting to share the story and the big asks that I have at the end, which is gonna then come into the podcast today, is because I wanna kinda, kinda disrupt the echo chamber that we sometimes live in, and just get to look at things from a little bit different point of view, especially from the point of view of people that are very different than us, right? And the heart behind this, again, is because I believe that on this podcast, our job is to be everyday missionaries. And what I love about that moniker is the fact that to be a missionary means that you go into a foreign environment, a culture that is not your culture, and then you try to understand that culture, you try to connect with that culture, so that you can then be a catalyst of bringing the love of Jesus to that culture. And I think in the United States, Christians are too much thinking like America is a Christian nation, and this is sort of their turf as Christians, and we need to just kinda reclaim some of the turf, and so we don't think like missionaries, we think a little bit like entitled landowners, where we think all the land is Christian, and just unfortunately, it's inhabited by some of the Canaanites that are non-Christian in our country, and we need to kinda claim this back as God's country. And none of that, to me, is very biblical, and none of that is very kingdom to me, none of that's very gospel to me. And so that's kinda why I'm bringing this up, to go like, "Man, how do we do this better? And how do we really represent Jesus well in the world? And how do we kind of even know where to demarcate our politics from our faith, our biases that are politically motivated, or religiously politically motivated, from what Jesus calls us to, to be otherworldly in this world?" Because if you read the Book of Revelation from high altitude, and we did this a couple of weeks ago as a church, what you see is that it's really clear that all the nations of the world are Babylon. So the United States, Russia, Ukraine, South Africa, you name the country, they're all technically Babylon, and they all technically do things and get stuff done according to the rules of Babylon, and then the allegiance witnesses of Christ while they're in the world, and living in this Babylon-esque landscape, they are to do business very different than Babylon. And so, then, when I start to see us as Christians push like Christian nationalism or whatever else, and I go, "That's just using Babylon tools in the name of Christ," which is even more harmful to the gospel than anything else, when you're starting to merge Babylon and Christ, or you're merging kinda the Babylon below with the Jerusalem above, you're trying to figure out how we can use the tactics of the dragon to advance the causes of the Lamb, you know, like, all of that is, I think is pretty destructive to the advancement of the kingdom of the gospel, and actually the witness of Christ in the world, and we're not being allegiance only to Christ, we're being allegiance to multiple things at the same time. I know that's a lot right there, but it gives you a sense of kinda where I'm coming from in some of this, and I know in this, there's gonna be a lot of you that listen, and you go, "Yep, amen, I'm with you," and there's gonna be others that listen and go, "But, but, but, wait, wait, uh, 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 uh," right? I totally get it, right? I totally get it, and I also understand that part of what makes this podcast sort of unique at times, is I'm trying to get into the murky space, because I don't wanna, you know, again, I have a degree in philosophy, and I don't wanna just be like, "Oh, here's my philosophical stuff." I'm like, "No, man, we gotta really get into the weeds, because Jesus was in the weeds." Like, Jesus got into the mess, and I think we need to get into those spaces too. Hence, the topic of the day, which is, "City councils, Christian nationalists, pride flags, and the way of Jesus." So, last night, here in our community, was a city council meeting, open forum, so people from the community could come and share about a recent event that happened in our community. Now, I have very limited knowledge of the event, frankly, in part because, I guess, when this happened, there was this big eruption of social media doing what it does best, which is dividing people and picking fights, and it was on our local Facebook community page. I'm not a member of that page, I have not been for probably close to a decade, maybe a little less than that, because I thought it was so toxic then, I'm like, "I don't wanna be part of this." So I'm not on it, I didn't see the big, you know, kind of eruption of people picking sides and going after each other and everything else, but, you know, it's indicative of kinda something that's underlying the culture right now. And so, the whole topic was around the fact that for the last year or so, on our main street, there was a large chain link fence that's owned by the city, that one of the persons in the community that has an adjacent business to it, she asked a friend, "Hey, could you weave in, like ribbon, to that fence and make like a large pride flag?" So an LGBTQ plus pride flag weaved into that fence as just kind of a declaration of, "Hey, this is a safe community, this is a safe space, we wanna send this message of safety to that subpopulation within our community." So that was up for about a year. Now, in light of that, I guess there are city ordinances that say, "Hey, you gotta get a permit, and you can't do this, and you can't do that." And there's all these ordinances are in place, but the city really just wasn't enforcing it, right? And that's true around our whole community, like, we, we see it all the time, you know what I mean? Like, there's businesses that put up signs that they're supposed to only have up for like, a week or two weeks, and it's only to announce an event, and those have been up for five years, like, you know, so the city just wasn't really enforcing anything. Well, then, a few weeks ago, kind of overnight, a couple of other flags were tacked to this city fence, next to the pride flag, or more pride display, because it was pretty big, and they were more of the, kind of the position of like, white nationalism, or maybe kinda Christian nationalism symbolism that is in there. One of the flags I was familiar with, the other one, I'm like, "I'm clueless to this," you know, "I'm just not, I'm not focusing on some of these subculture things enough." But, kind of, the purpose was to be like, "Well, if a pride flag can be up, then so can this kind of white nationalist flag as well." Like, that was kinda the attitude somebody had, and so, you know, you get suddenly this kinda like, "Whoa, wait, you got this one symbol that people think is supporting this idea of, of peace and safety, and now you have another symbol that seems to support kind of hate and bigotry," and the city kind of then went like, "We're pulling it all down." Like, it reminds me of like, when kids can't play with a toy, you know, together, then all the kids lose all the toys, it was kinda like that, so the city's like, "Ah, we're gonna do this." Kinda did it in the middle of the night, so to speak, didn't really advance notice the, the adjacent business or anything else, it was just sort of a reaction. And again, I'm gonna give a lot of grace to our city, having been in leadership now for a long period of time, leadership sucks, man, because half of any group may not like your decisions, right? So, I'm always really sympathetic to leaders, especially in the political sphere, because there's just no winning, you know, there's just no winning on some of that. So I think, you know, in that, you know, the city just kind of reacted, as opposed to said, "Okay, we do have policies, let's notify everybody about the policies, let's work this through, let's, you know, kind of control the car crash." It was just kinda like a car crash, and then from that, there was a reaction from the, kind of the LGBTQ plus and allies community that thought, "Well, this is just another vandalism, somebody's ripped down our flag." That's not what happened, the city just took it down, put it in a box, you know, kind of with respect, and kept everything for the owners of the ribbon to be able to kind of regather from the city. So, but the reaction was like, "Okay, here's like vandalism that happened, right, initially." And so then everything just kinda blew up on social media, and there was that kinda thing, and part of that is because there has been vandalism of pride monuments, or pride displays in our region, and it's weird for us in our region, because we're in a liberal part of the country, right? So we're in the greater Seattle area, and so it's kinda like, when you see that happen in a liberal area, it's a little bit more odd, just because you're like, "Hey, it seems like when you're in a liberal space, you're probably not gonna see that kind of vandalism," but there had been, and so it was assumed this was vandalism too. Hopefully you've got that part of the story at this point. So, it got turned into this narrative of white nationalists, Christian nationalists versus LGBTQ plus, and then the city pulls it all down, and now the city has to figure out how we move forward, and everybody that was on that social media stream of, you know, kind of, I don't know, it's like a civil war, they were coming to this city council meeting that was last night. And so, at the last minute, I realized it was last night, and I'm like, "I'm gonna go to this." You know, I've never been to the city council meetings, and, and I wanted to go and just spectate, I wasn't going to speak, you know, I had no agenda, other than, "I wanna be Jesus-like in this space." That was my sole agenda. Now, with that, I have some kinda dog in the fight, because I live in this community, I'm a pastor in this community, and I have a gay son who grew up in this community, and I have friends that have transgender kids, gay kids, that kinda thing, and I go, you know, "I get that space, and I get how lonely that space is, and I get how fearful that space is." If you read my article, you're gonna see some of those fears that I had kinda materialize in there, right? So, I automatically have a sensitivity in that sense, but I'm not really going into any other reason than just to kinda be Jesus in that space, and listen to people. So, I walk into the, the room, and there was well over a hundred people. So, for a city council meeting, you know, it was tenfold thicker with bodies than ever before, and as soon as you walked in the room, you could see the subdivision in the room. So, there was American flags on one side, kind of so to speak, and pride flags on the other, or pockets, pockets of American flags, pockets of pride flags, pockets of people clearly in the LGBTQ plus scope, and people clearly there to say, "We are opposed to the city having any government-sponsored, government-provided spaces for any kind of LGBTQ plus artwork," right? That's the, maybe the simplest way I can put it. But it was clear, it was a type of divided room, right? It was tribal in that sense, right? And so, I walk in, and my first thought, this is where I hope you can kind of track with me a little bit, and there's gonna be a couple of things I might say in this podcast that I know is gonna really bother maybe some people listening, and it won't be because of LGBTQ stuff, it'll be something completely different, and I hope you just show me grace in my convictions on some of this stuff. So anyway, I walk into the room, and my first thought was, "Where would Jesus sit?" Right? Like, like, "Where would he sit?" Because I just recently preached the Gospel of Luke, and it took about three years on and off, and, and there's this great line in there, where, like, religion really is against Jesus, the, the majority of the time, they're kind of, you know, in his face. And one of their biggest accusations was, "That dude is a friend of sinners," you know, and that's what religion likes to say, "There, he's a friend of sinners," you know, and he's like, "Whoa, but wisdom's proven by the fact that, yeah, I'm hanging with my friends." And, and you won't believe what happens when you make these people your friends, like, you, if there's any potential for any kind of life, beauty, transformation, bringing, flourishing to anything that decays, man, make friends with some people, and who knows where that's gonna go? Like, because that's where you get trust and space and everything else, right? So, I walk in, I'm like, "Where would Jesus sit?" And so, I ended up plopping myself in the middle of one of the LGBTQ plus pockets, right? Sat next to this super delightful, awesome individual. So we started talking for a couple of minutes, I said, "Hey, can I sit next to you?" And they were like, "That's awesome," and that kinda thing, and so we start talking, and, and I said, "So, how do you make money?" You know, I was just, instead of saying, "What's your job, you know, how do you make money?" Found out that they're, they work in the legal department for Nintendo, probably in their late twenties, recently had just gone through a divorce, their pronouns, are they them? Awesome person, so much fun, just talking with them throughout the evening, and, you know, even like, because it was a long meeting, it started seven, went till nine forty-five, didn't even get out of there till ten, and so, you know, we, just the two of us were just kind of even bantering and everything else, and I said, "Yeah, I'm a pastor here in town, but I live in a world, weird world, because not only am I an evangelical pastor, but I'm also the parent of a gay kid, and so I, I come at this a little differently than I think a lot of people do." And so that even melted the ice some more, and so, you know, there, and I'm, so I'm just in this kinda pocket of, you know, people that are kind of on that side, and then the person down from them, they're like, "Hey, can I give you a flag?" And so they gave me a pride flag, because they were passing out pride flags to everybody, you know, and so, you know, I took the pride flag that they gave me, because I'm like, "You know what? Hey, you know, there's a number of things I could say about that, but at the end of the day, I'm not gonna be like, 'Sorry, I'm not gonna take your flag,' you know what I mean? I'm like, 'Hey, this person is showing me warmth, I'm showing them warmth, they're here for a reason, this flaggy thing, to me, is not gonna be problematic for me to take the gift they just gave me, any more than a missionary in a foreign culture is gonna probably take whatever gift is given to them.'" It's a little bit like the meat sacrificed idols for me in some ways, Paul's like, "Man, if you're there and it's not bugging your conscience, eat," you know what I mean? And I'm like, "So, they were nice, they gave me a flag, it was really sweet of them," right? And I just sat with them, right? And I could hear their murmurs and their conversation as the night unfolded, right? But I thought, "That's where Jesus would sit," you know, and, and again, no, no, I'm not calling out anybody that didn't wanna sit with the LGBTQ crowd, but it was just like, "That's where I thought Jesus would sit, I think that's what Jesus would do, I think that's the shoulders that he would wanna kinda rub alongside, and get to know, and befriend in some ways." And so, you know, kinda did that, and then you just kinda waited for the night to start, and people signed up to, to speak, you know, in advance, and then after everybody went through the list, then any leftovers could go, and so, I don't know how many people shared last night, a lot, it was a lot. I mean, you think about that duration of time, there's a little thing in the middle that was just other business, but if everybody got three minutes, organizations got five minutes, that's a lot of people sharing, right? And so, people started getting up, and the first large span of individuals were all more, I would say, pretty easily to discern they were from the Christian community, because much of their vernacular and, and kind of opposition to the city giving space for, you know, any kind of pride celebration, or, or LGBTQ plus artwork that would be adjacent to public properties, they were definitely speaking in terms of God-designed marriage between one man and one woman, you know, "This is problematic from a moral perspective, real love is this, not that," you know, so you could kinda tell that, that the undertone of it was definitely religiously motivated, it really wasn't just simply political, what is the First Amendment, or whatever else, there was some of that in there too, but there was a lot of kind of that thing going on. Now, before the whole thing started, I'm surprised, they actually did a pledge of allegiance in the start of the evening, you know, and, and that to me was kind of almost like, creates this weird kinda juxtaposition in some ways, because, you know, much of what's gonna be shared then from some of the people is like, "Government should not be playing a role in having opinions on some of these things," you know, "So, government shouldn't play a role in giving space for the LGBTQ plus community to have messaging in adjacent to public properties, because that's government and then siding with a thing." But then we're gonna do this pledge where we're saying, "One nation under God," you know, and, and again, the history of that is definitely related, the Christian movements of the fifties, when, you know, really, there was kinda putting God on our currency, the elite pledge of allegiance became very, very prominent at that time. It was actually written in the late eighteen hundreds by a socialist, of all things, that's always the fun history of the pledge of allegiance. A socialist who didn't like the idea of the fifty states, wanted to focus on one nation, and then his messaging was co-opted when they added the United States of America, he was very upset by that, because he was a socialist, and he didn't want it to be fifty states. Needless to say, the event opened with a thing where God is openly proclaimed, and probably by some people that don't even believe in God, but I thought it was interesting, like, here's this thing that government is opening with that articulates the notion of a single God, whoever that God is, at least one God, and I thought, "Well, automatically, government is somehow favoring divinity in this meeting, and then it's gonna be Christians who say, 'Well, we don't want government favoring such things, except when it's something that we favor.'" And, and I think that's that trick that's going on with Christian nationalism right now, which is, it's saying, "Hey, we don't want government to have opinions on X, Y, and Z, unless it's opinions that we hold, and then we want government to have those opinions." And so for me, it was just kind of a weird opening moment of like, "Okay," as I reflected on the night, like, it was just kinda strange, like, you know, "We don't want government to be in that space, but we do want God to be on our currency, God to be on our pledge." You know, "We, we do want some things, some things in there too, we want the Senate to open with a prayer, we want the president to have a prayer back." And so, it's kinda like, it, it, this already kinda shows the murkiness of the problem before us, and before any civic kind of body, is, how do you accommodate all of that? Because, I remember, I read one time where, where somebody had written, I forget where it was, but if you, the problem with trying to become a society for everybody is that you're tempted to make it a society for nobody, which means, nobody can have any open declarations of anything, and that's the only way we can all get along, you know, and I'm like, "Yeah, I don't know if that's right either," you know what I mean? And so I'm, I'm still just kinda like, "Meh, working it out," or whatever else. For me, what's interesting is, and this is where I know some of you are gonna disagree, but let me give it some context here, my religious convictions, or my kingdom-minded convictions, is, I am not free to do the pledge of allegiance. So, let me though clarify this, I fly an American flag at my house three hundred and sixty-five days a year, it's lit by night, it is under the sunshine or the cloudy skies of Seattle by day, and so, I happily fly the American flag, I love the American flag. Now, I can look at the American flag and say, "I don't necessarily agree with everything that that flag has ever flown over the top of." Like, it once flew over the top of slavery being a legal and justified thing, it once flew over the idea that women didn't have the same kinda rights as men, that African-Americans didn't have the same rights as white men, that native persons did not have the same rights as white men. It's, it's been the source of some grief for people at different times, and yet it's also been the source of great relief, and great help, and great beauty, and great good, and so I always know that flag is a mixed bag of things, but I fly that every day at my house. So this is not a question of, "Do I appreciate my country, do I love my country," those kinds of things, but for me, I cannot do the pledge of allegiance because of that very concept, I cannot pledge allegiance to anything other than Christ. That kinda, for me, comes out of the Book of Revelation, and that idea that the, the faithful witnesses of Revelation, some interpreters will translate that as, "They're the allegiance ones, the allegiance witnesses, who do not swear allegiance to any other one but the Lamb or Christ," and especially because that is set in juxtaposition to the nations of the earth, being kind of representative of Babylon, or the beast, or whatever else, I go, "I, I can love my country, serve my country, die for my country if I need to, but I'm always like, I can only serve one Lord," because allegiance literally means like, "Alleged to their Lord," that's the etymology of allegiance. And if that word allegiance wasn't in there, I would probably be okay, you know, like, "I promise to serve, or I promise to love, or I promise to care," or whatever else, but the word allegiance for me makes me doing that a sinful thing. I'm not saying it's a sin for you, I'm saying it's a sin for me. So, it starts off with me uncomfortable, because I'm like, the evangelical dude that is in the room, that goes, "I can't pledge this, it would be sin for me," right? Like, "I can't do that." And so, I, I had this instant moment of like, "Wow, this is a, this is already weird," kind of, "I already feel fish out of water, and I wonder how many other people feel fish out of water for other different reasons and everything else," and, and so it's just super strange for me, right? So anyway, that's just a sidebar to go like, "Hey, here's my own challenges sometimes, and problems and everything else," and, and again, even where I understand other people's religious convictions that hold them to something in conscience, and I get it, because this is the one that holds me in, in my conscience. So, anyway, so I already feel like a little awkward when I'm like, "I'm not doing the pledge of allegiance, but I stand," you know, I, I mean, because I wanna show respect,[1670.04] So I'm all about showing respect to the flag, that kind of thing. After that, you know, people start getting up and sharing. And honestly, the large first batch, probably 15, 20 people were all out of that Christian space and everything else. And in listening, there, I would say, some of the comments were, I had like zero problem with the commentary, you know? Like, I can be really sympathetic to the person that says, like, hey, I just don't think, you know, any kind of public spaces that are taxed, all they're funded, or they're controlled by local government, that they should have any kind of artwork that is message-based. So if you can find neutral art, great, but there shouldn't be art that has some kind of built-in messaging kind of connected to it. That argument I could really understand. And there was one of my fellow pastors that got up at the very end of the night, and that was kind of the case he made. He's like, hey, man, the role of government is to make sure people in their private properties and private spaces, they can fly whatever they want to fly, right? Like, they should defend and protect that, but in the public space, maybe that should just stay a neutral palette. And there was a few people that kinda had that kind of position. I totally understand that. I'm not sure I fully agree with that. Like, and there would be reasons for that. And part of it is because I think, much like the prophets of the Old Testament, art also confronts us and convicts us and alerts us and makes us look within ourselves a little bit. And, you know, so just that part of it where I go, okay, sometimes, you know, provocative art isn't necessarily bad, even for a community, even if it has some sponsorship within a municipality, right? You know, because it's like, you know, even in our community, we have these big wood slats of art. And I remember when they were first put up, there was some problems with some of it, because some people are like, that looks like a naked, you know, like, like, I think it's, most of them are indigenous. It looks like a naked indigenous person up there, and they were offended that it looked like a naked person. And another person's like, no, that's, that is the tunic that females wore in our tribal population here, you know? So there was like already like, back in the day when that stuff got put up, like, everybody couldn't agree on that art. You would think it would be pretty benign, but it's like, no, they couldn't even agree on that. So I'm not sure where I fully land. Like, I know there needs to be margins to that. But again, I'm just not settled that, you know, government should never celebrate art if it would be in some way controversial. I'm just, I'm not sure where I land on that. Just because for a whole variety of reasons. Anyway, so there's those. But then the other thing that was happening, and I know I'm probably now starting to ramble a little bit about it, so I'm gonna go straight to it. Other thing that was happening though, was definitely accusatory as far as people would get up and say, I don't hate the LGBTQ plus community, but, right? And it would kind of be the but. And there was accusations anywhere of they're wanting to groom kids sexually to, here is all the psychological damage of supporting this community, what it does to people. There was a certain level of kind of like, you know, this is clearly sin in the eyes of God. And, you know, we need to kind of purge the sin problem of our culture, not by supporting it. There was lectures about pride, like pride is a sin. Though I thought it was interesting if I said, well, what if I'm a proud American? Is that a sin? Or if I proudly fly the American flag, is that a sin? And that's where, again, there's this inconsistency. It's like, if it's pride in that, it's okay. But if it's pride in this, it's wrong. And so there was just some of that stuff. And there was kind of the reminder that marriage is only between one man and one woman. And so it was almost like, like, kind of like church messaging or doctrine messaging, biblical messaging, whatever it is, when the topic was really just supposed to be about ordinances related to city properties and display of art. So it kinda had that. And then what I thought was really interesting is some people get up, say that, and then they just leave. Like, you know what I mean? Like, I shared my stuff and I'm gonna walk out the door, as opposed to staying and really maybe even listening to other positions or other points of view, or getting to know other people or whatever else. And so for me, just sitting there and listening to some of this stuff, and again, some of it was more benign, some of it, I was just like, oh, golly, I don't think you're hearing how terrible that sounds right now. Like, it just doesn't sound loving or compassionate or understanding or kind in any way. You know, it just, or even the fact that I think there was just at times real mischaracterizations about the LGBTQ plus community that I go, man, if those things were said about Christians, I would be like, I would be bothered by that too, you know? So there was just a certain level, I think biblically, you could call it at times, some of the things that were getting said, it's kind of like slander, you know? Where it's like, you know, you're getting your messaging from some kind of other news source. And it sounds like that set of news sources more than, you know, really you've ever sat down and talked with anybody for any length of time within the LGBTQ plus community. So there was some of that. Then, then there was those who came up and were kind of in support of the LGBTQ plus community, or they were offended on behalf of, or they were members of the community and they were offended. And the city council was getting hammered by those parties. And there was a lot of, you know, kind of either outrageous kind of thing, like there was just outrage, or lots of talk of not feeling safe, right? So now let me see if I can get over the top of that whole night. So all this stuff is shared. And at the end of the night, I went, okay, what, what is it that I just heard? And if you tried to boil it all down, the LGBTQ plus community was saying, we're afraid. We're just afraid. And when you're afraid, it comes out sometimes as anger or as resentment or hostility. But the messaging was really, really consistent. We're afraid. And I thought, what a missed opportunity, right? For us as Christians, because we were not necessarily there that night as a voice that said, how can I come alongside you and help you not feel afraid, right? Like, how can I do that? Because what was interesting to me is there was really two elements in play. There was the pride banner, and then there was the white Christian nationalist flags. And it would have been awesome to see Christians get up and say, you know what? I stand with you all in that those symbols, because they feel hateful, they sound kinda hateful, I'm with you, I don't stand for that either, right? So the target, the topic and target was just the pride flag. There wasn't a single Christian that says, hey, man, when it came to those other things, that's wrong. That is hateful. I agree with you in the pride community that that stuff is hateful. Like, nobody stepped up and condemned that side. It was just condemning kind of the pride flag. And I thought, what a missed opportunity, right? Like, because I think, you know, we don't realize that the people in that community really do feel fearful. And this may come as a surprise to some of us, they have good reason to feel fearful. Like, one of the things that came up last night in the meeting was that in Kirkland, which is an adjacent community to us, there is some section of like the downtown near the park that has some pride memorial space. And then there's signs up that say, there's cameras that are watching this space because it gets destroyed or vandalized or whatever else. And so we need to just have kind of security. So if you see anybody come and vandalize this space, let the authorities know. Because, I don't know, vandalism, I guess, is illegal. But it was shared as more like a how terrible it is that the city is encouraging people to turn in their neighbors if they vandalize that space. Like, it was, again, they kinda had that tone deaf thing where that, you know, it was like, you know, that if that memorial wasn't there, then there wouldn't be any vandalism, and they wouldn't have to have the cameras. And so if they just got rid of it, it would get rid of the problem. But instead, because they leave it, now they have to monitor it. And that's really terrible that they even have to monitor it, because it should never be there to begin with. And it loses the fact that, hey, if pride things are getting vandalized a lot, that kind of sends the message of, we don't like you, get out. You should be a little nervous if you're in that community because we're doing things at least that are designed to send the message of, we don't like you, don't support you, don't want you, and we're sick of this in our community, right? So you gotta put yourself in the shoes of the other, I think, in some ways, and say, do they have a reason to be fearful? All right. I'll give you a personal example, and this may be one of the more offensive things, because I have to cuss to do it, but I'll give you some perspective. So my son and his partner were out to lunch up in Salton just a couple of weeks ago. There's this really cool bakery in Salton. I used to make fun of Salton a lot. Now I have to embrace it because he lives there. And so I'm getting better. I'm growing. And so they're sitting in this bakery, and they're just the two of them, you know, having lunch or whatever else. And these two guys walk in. And one guy looks at the other guy, points to the booth where my son and his partner are sitting. And he goes, these fuckers are everywhere nowadays, right? Like, imagine if you were out to lunch and somebody just walks by your table and decides to highlight you and say that to your face, right? Like, and again, this is a liberal Seattle area, you know what I mean? And it was funny, because Ben, my son's partner, says, dude, you're the one that doubted us, right? Because, you know, like gray looks a little bit more the part, I guess, and that kind of thing. And I go, but this is an example. And as I share in my paper, my son has been repeatedly called derogatory things just out and about, as though that's not completely offensive. And so part of my thing in this is going, if you sit down and talk to people within that community, you're gonna find there is a lot of fear. And some of it may be overblown, and some of it's very real. And many of the wounds you're gonna find in that community is because they were inflicted by people, oftentimes in a religious context or community, for all kinds of different reasons. And all the more then, when then religious parties speak up, it's almost like traumatizing, because they're like, oh, I know this one. I've been down this road before. This is why, for example, they talk about high suicide rates within the LGBTQ plus community. What we don't always look at is the full range of the statistics. So if you come out in kind of, I'm gonna call it an agnostic family, or just a family that doesn't have any real religious background, your mental health is about equal or stable if you come out in that environment. If you come out in a religious home that views this topic as, you know, a stark sin line, your mental health is dramatically decreased. And youth, LGBTQ youth in Christian environments in particular, have the highest suicide rates of anybody. And much of that is because there is a great deal of kind of either pressure or rejection, or trying to, you know, repair their broken kid or whatever in such a way that it does really detrimental damage to their psyche at a very impressionable age. Like, you're already not sure who you are, and now somebody's telling you how bad you are. That's gonna cause high rates and all kinds of things, right? So self-harm, suicide, drug and alcohol abuse, like, you look at the trends and it's all in there when it comes to this. And so that community is very hurt, wounded, scared. Oftentimes, they're suffering under a certain level of, I don't know what might happen next. And what's tragic is the place that they go, the least amount of hope. It's the Christian church. In fact, if anything, they're my greatest threat in this world, right? And I think, again, that was the thing, I couldn't help but walk away last night, go, if we were, if we're listening, if we're really listening, here is this scared community. And like, like, Jesus is like, man, I'm sending you out into the world to love your neighbor, to treat others as you want to be treated, to let your perfect love cast out fear, to be friends, you know, with the broken, the hurting, the sinner, the whatever labeling or words that we want to use, right? And to come with something different, you know? And I'm like, I'm not sure that got heard. In fact, after the whole thing broke, I was talking to somebody who, you know, very much was kind of, I'm here to stand against any of these kind of pride artwork things being up. And I asked them, I said, well, what did you hear tonight? And he goes, a lot of anger, right? And I go, well, what do you think drives anger? And he's like, well, fear. And I go, right. I said, I understand where you're coming from in this, but imagine if they felt like you had their back, right? Even if you disagree, but you had their back, and you were wanting to make sure that they felt safe in this community, and you were going out of your way as just a neighbor to another neighbor and saying, you know what? I know you feel afraid. What can I do? What can I do to help you feel secure and help you feel safe? And help you feel backed up, you know? And they're like, yeah, I can kinda see that. I go, I think that's more a homework assignment on this, you know? And to just worry about making sure that they can't have some kind of artwork up that displays their community, that isn't saying, I got your back and I want to look out for you, even in our disagreement. And so regardless of whether we're pro or con on these monuments or these pieces of art or whatever you want to call them, man, are you making sure your neighbor knows you love them, that you really love them, right? And that you want to know their story, and you want to understand where they come from, and you want to understand their wounds, and you want to try to bind up the broken, right? In the space that you are placed, right? And so after the whole thing broke, I went from my one pod of LGBTQ plus people, and I went over to the mass majority of them, kind of on the other side of the room. And I just started meeting as many people as I could, right? And saying, thank you for sharing your story. You know, I have a gay son. As a parent, I know what it's like when people kind of can judge your kid, or they judge you for how you're handling your kid. I know it's a lonely space as a parent, you know? Or there was a couple of individuals that had grown up in the church that kind of shared that. Like, you know, I tried to pray the gay away. I tried to, you know, study the gay away. I tried to do all this. And after 30 years, I was so exhausted, I just had to give up or whatever else. And that kind of thing. And I was just like, hey, thanks for sharing your story. I understand that world too. I get it. I know where you're coming from in that. And I just want to let you know, I appreciate you, right? Like, the grassroots level is so much more important in my mind than we gotta take some kind of stands about public displays of things. In fact, if anything, I get a little concerned that fighting for the public displays of things just undermines our ability to be missionaries in a real thoughtful, intentional, and personal kind of way, you know? And I think that was kind of the walk away. I thought, man, the lines are just more drawn at the end of the night. And I think the LGBTQ plus community is gonna feel more estranged, more, whether it's perceived or real threatened, more characterized in a certain sort of way. And I think we've lost opportunity than, I think, as Christians or as evangelicals to be a friendly and kind source of good in their lives, right? And that was kind of what I wrote at the end of my paper, where I'm like, man, I'm not asking us to become pride flag-waving allies. That's not what I encouraged in the article that I wrote. My thing is though, do good, be kind, protect that community. Don't be a source of grief for that community. And if you see or hear others that are doing things that make that community feel threatened or hurt or marginalized or stereotyped, to kindly step in and try to bring that salsa level down, you know, like, just do that, you know what I mean? Just kind of put yourself kind of between the spaces. And, you know, do unto others as you'd want them to do unto you. Like, that's the most I'm asking for, kind of in all of this, right? So I think that's the space we need to get into. But again, as things kind of ended last night, I was like, we, I think we dug the hole a little deeper within our community, and there's a little bit more digging else that's gonna have to happen. And again, I don't think that means that, you know, you have to give up your conscience or convictions on this stuff, but it's learning what things matter most. And public debates, it reminds me a little bit like Jesus and the whole, when they bring a coin to him, they're like, hey, who's picture's on this, and should we pay taxes to Caesar? And he's like, this is dumb. This is dumb. Like, just render unto God the things that are God's, you know? Like, Caesar stuff is Caesar stuff, whatever, you know? Babylon is Babylon. Babylon's gonna do what Babylon's gonna do. How are you being me in the spaces that you live in? And I think that's the real heart behind it all, you know, is how are you being me in the spaces that you live in? Now, again, I'm not insensitive to the debate about, again, displays of art in public spaces and that kind of thing. And, you know, I don't have a problem with Christians having those conversations and non-Christians and people at different parties having those conversations, and the city's gonna have to come up with something on that. And ultimately, you know, I get the sense that the city is gonna land on something that probably restricts a bunch of stuff, because now it's just gonna escalate. But they're gonna create some kind of space in the community. They may allow it to be somehow privately funded, but it's going to be in an open space. It's going to highlight the LGBTQ plus community, and it will be policed by the local police department. You know, they're gonna make sure that it doesn't get vandalized, stuff like that. There's probably gonna end in that kind of arena there. And so then as Christians, we're gonna be left with, how do we respond to that thing when it eventually happens? Because I'm pretty certain it's gonna happen. I don't have any clairvoyant insight to that, or I don't have some kind of insider track to city government. But, you know, again, I stayed pretty long after last night. And, you know, the city council was talking, because a lot of the LGBTQ plus stayed. And I kind of hung out a little bit. And, you know, you can see that the city council is certainly sympathetic to the fact that they have a sub-contingent of their community that feels scared, right? And they should care about people that feel scared and don't feel like they can openly be themselves without some level of retaliation or some level of insecurity, you know? Like, I have a friend of mine that has a trans child. There was recently, some guys in a truck came by and threw water balloons at them and called them a bunch of translators or whatever else, you know? And they had to get the police department involved and that kind of thing. And I have some other friends that have dealt with, like, one of their sons was beat up pretty bad here recently in Everett, you know, because he went into the boys' bathroom, and he's a boy, but he's gay, and they said, you're in the wrong bathroom. Obviously, he can't go into the girls' bathroom necessarily, and so they beat him up. And it's pretty bad. He's struggling, you know, and that. And I go, this community hears those stories, and all the more they're like, am I next? Is it gonna be me? Or whatever else? And so I just can't help but go, again, how would Jesus fit into this space? What would Jesus do? I'm not sure Jesus would really even have pride flag discussions, to be honest, like, you know what I mean? I think he'd be like, hey, man, Babylon does what Babylon does. This is why I'm not gonna talk about taxation. I'm not gonna talk about pride flags. I'm not gonna talk about American flags. I'm not gonna talk about... Like, I think he's like, man, this is all distraction to what is the kingdom all about? What is the Sermon on the Mount all about? How do we exercise the fruit of the Spirit? How do we really, in fact, fulfill the embodiment of the law and love our neighbors as ourselves? That's the repeated clause. How do we love our neighbors as ourselves? And I think especially for many of us who kind of live in bubble And I think especially for many of us who kind of live in bubbles, that don't have a lot of contact with different trans persons, or queer, or gay, or lesbian, or whatever it is, like, you know, just, we don't have a lot of contact with that. And to start doing that might be really, really fruitful, you know? Like, I would even give the challenge that says, hey, if you know somebody in that community that you have enough rapport with, take them out to lunch, and just hear their story, right? Just talk to them, listen to them, befriend them, figure out their fears, figure out their hopes, figure out whatever they've been through in life, and, and see if you can bind up some wounds on that, you know? I think that's a really fruitful thing. If maybe some in that community really make you nervous, all the more you should get to know somebody in that community and hear from them. And what you're going to find is no story is the same, for sure. But I can't help but go, I think that's what Jesus would do. I really think that's what he would do, you know? And so, you know, I'm sure there's some listening to this, and you're having 100 pushbacks, you know what I mean? And it's going to be, but don't forget sin, and, you know, like, I get that, I totally get that. But I'm going back to, you're never going to be able to get to that discussion if you don't authentically and selflessly love the people that you want to have that discussion with. Like, when I was listening to some of the stuff that was getting said last night, I'm like, it's doing the opposite. Like, it's just doing the opposite of what your agenda is, you know? And if you, it's, like, I, if we're, if we're really going to succeed in what Jesus calls us to do, then the Sermon on the Mount, again, is the roadmap to that, you know, it just really is. And it means not picking disembodied fights, you know? That's kind of what it is. Like, we're, we're going to, we're going to, at the cost of trying to really connect with people and, and care for them in their space, and get to know them in their space, we're just kind of, kind of have a public discourse, and it dehumanizes it a little bit. It's as much as why I don't love these debates on social media, because it, it dehumanizes it. There were some of the things that people wrote in, and then what they wrote in last night at the meeting were read, and I go, those ones sounded more barbed automatically, because they don't have to look other people in the eye. So as soon as you are removed a step from having to look another person in the eye, it's easy to be more hardened, or caustic, or rigid, or unwavering, or whatever else, and to go look somebody in the eye, especially somebody that you might feel uncomfortable with, puts you at a certain level of, of, like, risk, or discomfort, which I think ultimately, the healthy word behind that is humility? Like, it, it kind of humbles us a little bit when we're in a space that's uncomfortable like that, it levels the playing field a little bit more. And from that, maybe there can be a certain level of empathy, right? Just empathy. Because when I think about the kingdom of Jesus, it should be compelling. And, because that's what Jesus was, you know? Like, why did so many people want to be around Him? You know, like, like, what was that? You know? And I go, He was compelling, He was so compelling, you know? And that compelling thing changes lives. And I think even as an evangelical Christian, I long to see compelling. And I don't get to see it very often, you know? And, and, and that really saddens me. That's like, I'm really driven to go like, how can I be more compelling? How can I be the nicest, kindest, most jovial person in the room? How can I walk across the room in my discomfort and bond with somebody different than me, and to know their life and story, so that I can be a resource for good, and kindness, and compassion in their life? And especially if they feel insecure, how can he be a source that wants them to know they're secure with me? Because that, I think, in my mind, is the opening of the road to deeper connection, deeper considerations, and having some really good dialogue about what we most care about, especially as everyday missionaries, right? And so, man, that's my heart on this. And so, you know, that was, I know, a little bit of a, like a winding journey, or whatever else, I hope you don't mind, that I kind of did it more that way. And you can go, I think on our city website, we'd have the meeting last night and everything else, and you could hear it for yourself. You know, I would say when it came to the pride community, you know, you're going to hear some, some hostility in there, and some hurt in there for sure. And the temptation is to go, well, that doesn't sound very tolerant, they don't sound very accepting, and, and I go, we need to get past that whole line of reasoning, right? And here's why, like, honestly, I always, I'm just admitting this is my own sin, when I hear Christians talk about how intolerant the tolerant crowd is, I roll my eyes every time, because I'm like, okay, if you think it's persecution, well, that's what you signed up for. And Jesus said, be happy. When you get persecuted, be happy, leap for joy, like, this is not unexpected, you know what I mean? If you feel like that they're intolerant of you, yeah, right? Who cares, man? Big deal. Like, as soon as I start griping about that, then it's silly, I forget exactly what I signed up for. So that's just my personal take. Anytime the people talk about how, you know, again, that community is no more accepting than the things they accuse us of, I'm like, yeah, and so what? So what? Who cares? That, that's, that does not change what I'm supposed to do, you know what I mean? Like, at all. And if they feel I'm really intolerant, I need to understand why they may feel that way. And maybe even in that, I will realize that there are some things that are in me that are in fact intolerant, and I maybe need to be more like Jesus in some of those things, and I didn't realize it before, right? Because I think that's really true, too, you know? You know, especially like, I think about like last night, when some of the people were saying like, hey, this is about grooming kids, hey, this is about mutilating bodies, hey, this is about whatever. And, and I'm sitting there going, okay, if I'm on the other side hearing that, I go, well, wait, though, some of the highest rates of sexual assault of children come from religious institutions. So if you, if you're on that side of the room, you're like, uh, listen, it's churches that are one of the most dangerous places to put your kids. That's, that's what they're thinking when they're hearing these arguments about how you're all groomers over here, they're like, wait a minute, we don't really get statistically in trouble for this like churches do, and religious affiliated bodies do. And frankly, they're right. Like, if you look at actuary data sites, which is just insurance companies putting together, how do we like structure, you know, what we charge for insurance? And you, you look at payouts from insurance companies, from lawsuits related to sexual misconduct, churches are number two in the list of most payouts because of sexually inappropriate things that happen in the context of that, and they have to pay out for litigation and things of that nature. So the community that's hearing, we're the groomers, are like, wait a minute, but you guys are the ones that, that have the, one of the highest rates of this in your community, and then you're characterizing us this way. And that's just one of those things where I go like, hey, we need to all kind of slow our roll a little bit, and maybe be careful in the words that we use, and the accusations that we make, because we may be mischaracterizing some things that we don't fully understand. Now, that isn't to say, so therefore, all the churches are bad. I'm pastor in a church, I love the church, I love our church. You know, we're very strict about disclosing things, and making sure we're doing background checks, and, you know, we're going to, we're going to immediately contact authorities if we find any hint of anything. So we're very committed to that. But religious bodies have not always done it that way, and we need to admit, yeah, like, I get it, yeah? We may say some things, and we've got more dirt than you guys do, right? So that community, they kind of look and go, come on, man, like, stop casting the blame our way when there's a lot of blame to go your way. We should be humble about that, and be open about that, and acknowledge some of those things, you know? Or talking about using terms like mutilation, you know? Like, I remember last night, I heard that, and I thought, gosh, man, but we all circumcise our boys, a lot of us as Christians at least would circumcise our boys, that's seeming like a mutilation of a sexual organ, like, like, let's not use the term mutilation necessarily, that isn't, because it's just inflammatory again. It's like designed to, to, to rile, and to, to put things in the most sinister type of light. And, and I go, I don't think it advances healthy conversation, I don't think it advances neighborly love, and it doesn't try to understand all of the complexity and nuances that, that in particular, people in that community, and the parents of people in that community have to go through. It's just not an easy thing, being friends with parents of trans kids. I'm just telling you, it's agonizing, it is agonizing. It's lonely, it's confusing, you are, you are damned for anything that you do in that space, you know? And, and then on top of it, whatever road you travel, you're going to be vilified by half of the argument, you know? I have a friend of mine in Spokane that has a trans child, and so they finally said, I'm just going to support my kid. And no exaggeration, all the Christians in their family won't even talk to their child now, right? Won't even talk to their child. Like, they go to family events, and everybody ignores that kid, you know? And I go, how sad, like, how sad that the messaging this kid has is, yeah, my Christian family doesn't like me anymore, right? What a missed opportunity, what a missed opportunity, you know? So, I know, probably some of those things, a little bothersome again, but I just, I keep thinking in terms of, if I'm supposed to love others, is I want to be loved, or I want to treat others as I want to be treated, I think we can do this so much better, I really do. And I just keep going back to, how would Jesus navigate these lives? Because at the end of the day, only God can transform any heart, period, you know? Like, that's just kind of the reality. And so, you know, kind of waiting on God to do whatever God wants to do in the lives of any number of us, including myself, my heart is only going to change if God decides to change my heart, right? Therefore, I want to be thoughtful to then how to fulfill the great commandment in what I do. And how to seek the welfare of the city that I live in, which when Jeremiah gave that, God was telling Jeremiah, tell the people of Israel to be supportive in Babylon. Seek the welfare of the cities of Babylon, because when you seek their welfare, you will benefit from that as well. And I think that's part of our missional calling in the world, right? And the more we do that, the more we make investment, the more we're loving on people, the more we're safe space, the more we're defending those who do not feel defended, that we're protecting those who don't feel protected, then the more they'll listen to us, and they'll open up to us, and they'll have conversations with us, and we'll build relationship, and maybe we'll learn some things about each other, and then from that, we can share about this Jesus dude that we follow, and how He changes everything. And when we do that, man, we will be effective everyday missionaries.